All right, it's seven o'clock. We have a call if you'd rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. First up, we have approval of the minutes from the March 2nd meeting.
That we approve the minutes of the March 2nd meeting?
Second.
A motion from Nancy, second from Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Mr. Morgan, do we have any public comment? Okay, thank you. All right, earlier this evening, I don't know if, this is our fourth meeting, so I don't know when it happened. We had an executive session prior to the meeting to discuss open litigation. All right, next proclamation Holden Higbee, state diving champion. Morgan? Thank you. All right, so if you've paid attention to things happening in Danville the last few weeks, you've probably seen that Mr. Higbee has gotten a little bit of attention. He had a very successful run this year in the state diving championships and finished on top. And he's had a lot of accolades for that, well deserved. And so we thought it fitting here as a council, as the town of Danville, to also recognize Holden Higbee. So I have a proclamation that I'm going to read, and then we'll do a few things afterwards. So proclamation for Holden Higbee. Whereas Holden Higbee, a junior at Danville Community High School and a member of the Danville Boys Swim and Diving Team, scored a 5.35.75 at the state championship in the one-meter diving event, earning himself a gold medal and the state champion title. Earlier this season Holden broke the Hendricks County diving record with a score of 6.12.70, and he went undefeated for the season. Whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to such a person that gives so much of their time, effort, and passion to the Danville diving team. Whereas the athletic success of Holden Higbee is a great source of community pride. Whereas the town of Danville does desire to give Holden Higbee recognition for the dedication, the commitment, and the effort he has afforded to his teammates, the students, and citizens of the town of Danville. Now therefore be it proclaimed that by virtue of the authority vested in the town council of the town of Danville in the state of Indiana, we do hereby proclaim thanks and a recognition to Holden Higbee for his years of practice and talent and to be awarded such a high honor. And we urge all citizens to make an impact on their community like Holden Higbee has and continue to do so for the town of Danville. In witness whereof, we have herein to set our hand and cause the seal of the town of Danville, Indiana to be affixed this 16th day of March, the year of 2022. Holden, congratulations. And now we're gonna sign, we have to take a vote, correct?
Take a vote, and then once you sign it, Lisa's agreed to run over and make a copy, but, and then we can do a presentation or however you want to handle it.
Okay, all right, I'll entertain a motion to pass this proclamation.
I'll make a motion to approve proclamation for Holden Higbee.
I second it.
Motion by Chris, second by Nancy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero.
If you want to go ahead and sign as you go across, and then we have stamped, we can stamp the attest, and then it's up to you if you want to do.
Do some pictures after that?
Do some pictures after that.
So if you'll just hang out for a second?
Mr. President, while you're signing that, I'd like to make note that my office manager is the one that helped put this together, and her son swims for Cascade, and she considered it a true honor preparing this for you. She's heard of you, and she thought it was a real honor to be able to do that, so, yeah.
Pretty cool stuff. I think Danville's been really blessed with sports, good sports teams across the board over the last few years, so.
Can you get Courtney to stamp that real quick, please? Thank you. So one copy of this, we'll ask you to come up, and we'll make a presentation, and we'll take as many pictures as you want. We all get paid the same, so however long you want to take, it's fine with us. It's your day.
And the parents should be recognized too for all those hours in a hot swimming pool.
That's true.
Yeah. Yeah, at least at football or basketball, I mean, there could be rainy, this, boy, and those auditoriums or whatever, those things are just hot, they're humid, there's just nothing good there.
Well, I, my daughter has taken up swimming, she's eight, and she's pretty good, it sounds like, so I'm gonna have to dress accordingly when I go to her events. I had to leave one a few months ago because I was just getting very warm, but well worth it.
So Holden, when you come up here, would you like to say anything? You don't have to.
I told him he had to give an hour-long speech. Okay, very good. Need Jeopardy music.
Thanks, Lisa. Parents, do you want to be in, we'll do pictures with you guys as well, absolutely.
Jill, you want me to use your phone?
Okay. One more. Jill, could you come in just a little bit? Thank you. Thanks.
Come in that way?
Right.
One, two. Thank you.
The floor is yours.
I just want to say thank you for everyone recognizing me. It really does mean a lot, and it is an honor to be here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Good luck next year, and I hear you're going to Purdue, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll forgive you for that. I think you had to, though, right? I mean. Congratulations.
A rule that you have to stick around once you've received your award, but it's my understanding we may in fact see you next year.
Thank you, guys. Okay. Next on the list is the results of the work study. Earlier tonight, we held a work study to discuss approval of a fiscal study to be performed, and we did not make any decisions on that, but we will have to vote on that this evening if we're going to do that. It says here fire department, is there someone from the fire department that would like to make a few comments, or?
I just listed him.
Okay. You don't have to, Rob. I know how shy you are.
And I asked Mrs. White to stick around for a minute because there is, obviously, there's a cost to this study, and Center, we may want to ask them if they would be interested in splitting the cost with us, so I asked her to stay and determine that, if that's something you choose to do.
Okay, all right. And so we are not going to, we're not voting on a study for the consolidation, right? This is strictly, okay, all right. So I should ask that now?
Yeah. The cost for the fiscal analysis without Marion Township, which for public record, Marion Township opted to not be a participant in this, the cost would be $23,000 for the fiscal study. So it would be about.
Okay, did you say 23?
23,000, yeah.
So, Ms. White, would Center Township have any interest in splitting that cost or taking a share of that cost?
We're okay with the cost.
Okay. Do we need to get into specifics on the split, or is it 50/50, or what is that?
The cost would be paid by the town of Danville, that's who the contract would be with, and then the clerk treasurer would bill Center Township for their portion.
Okay.
Would that portion be 50%?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And just for clarification, this is not voting on a territory, and I keep saying this because I keep getting the question. We are not voting to put a territory in place, we are simply discussing a study to see what it would cost. Either of you have any comments, questions? I'm gonna make a brief comment similar to what I made in the work study. I think doing the study is probably okay, but we just have to use caution when we're talking about raising taxes on our citizens, so, for what that's worth. All right, with that being the case, I will open the floor for a motion to approve the work study, I'm sorry, to approve the fiscal plan, or the fiscal study by Baker Tilly, right? Is that Baker Tilly?
I'll make a motion to approve the fire territory fiscal study.
Second it.
A motion by Chris, second by Nancy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Just me, okay. Okay, thank you.
On behalf of the Danville Fire Department, thank you for approving that, so we can move forward with the work study.
You're welcome. All right. Next on the list, we have Resolution 2-2022, Fiscal Plan for Miller Annexation. Town Planner?
Good evening. This is the resolution for a requested annexation ordinance one, which is the next item on the agenda. The resolution was prepared by O. W. Cronin Associates, and there, we did have the public hearing two weeks ago. The fiscal impact study did not show any negative impacts to the town of Danville. Most of the services are being provided at this time anyway, it's in an area that, right, kind of in town. So that is the resolution, and it is up for approval.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? I have a motion for Resolution 2-2022 Fiscal Plan for Miller Annexation.
I move that we approve Resolution 2-2022, the fiscal plan for Miller Annexation.
Second.
Motion by Nancy, second by Chris. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. You're next.
Okay, so the next item is the ordinance, ordinance one for the super voluntary annexation of the Miller request, which is what you just voted on the resolution. As I said, there was a public hearing two weeks ago, we've not had any comments or any objections to this.
Okay, thank you. I would like to point out, I talked to the attorney a little bit ago, we do have a slight description discrepancy here, it lists Hancock County on page 10, and that should be Hendricks County. I'm told we can still vote on this, and this will be changed.
Okay, we'll make sure that gets changed.
Okay, thank you. No, it's right here. I forgot to pause. Sorry. It's okay. Okay. All right, so now ordinance 01-2022 Request for Super Voluntary Annexation. Do we have any questions? What's that?
We need to vote on Resolution 2.
Resolution's been, you guys passed it just?
Yeah, we did that one.
Now you're quoting on ordinance one?
Yes.
All right.
It's okay. All right, I have a motion.
I'll move that we pass Ordinance 01-2022 Request for Super Voluntary Annexation.
Second.
Motion by Nancy, second by Chris. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. All right, we will sign these this time, sorry about that. Thank you. You're welcome, thank you. Okay, we have a request to send out an RFP for a Unified Development Ordinance. Town Planner, can you give us a little bit of background on this?
Yes. So, the towns ordinances, we have a subdivision control ordinance and a zoning ordinance. Those ordinances date way back, they're very out of date, very limited on, I'll just give you one example. For the zoning ordinance, we don't have a lot of teeth when it comes to requiring development standards such as architectural features. If you're in corridor protection overlay district, we have that, but just if someone wanted to go out and develop an R1 subdivision, it could be 100% vinyl. So, in looking at these ordinances and seeing where the lack, you know, they need to be updated, that's what this will do. The UDO combines both ordinances so that you're not going to so many different ordinances, and it's, for lack of better terms, keeps from having mistakes being made. So this RFP is something that we want to send out to planners or companies that can give us a quote on what it would cost to do a Unified Development Ordinance. And that's all we're requesting, is to be able to send this out so that we can get a quote back to see if it's something that the town is gonna be able to do.
We're just looking for consensus, correct?
That's correct, Mr. President.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ordinance 2-2022 Amendment to Salary Ordinance, Clerk Treasurer. Jenny is not here this evening.
This ordinance comes before you for a second read, was introduced at our last council meeting. It merely cleans up some of our salary ordinance with reference to some parks and recreation positions, and then a, I guess, an omission on the wording for the fire department, full-time and part-time employees, so that was all cleaned up.
All right. All right, any questions from the council? I entertain a motion for Ordinance 20-2022 Salary Ordinance.
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2-2022.
Second.
A motion by Chris and a second by Nancy. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Okay, next up is Ordinance 3-2022 Amendment to Traffic Code Stop Signs Section, Town Manager. Mark, you had explained this to me a little bit earlier this week, if you could.
So over the years, the town of Danville has added numerous stop signs, and I don't know why, but they were never added to our code of ordinances. So I asked our code enforcement officer Blaine route to go out and do an inventory of the stop signs. Obviously Blaine's very thorough, and we went from a couple pages to seven. And the one thing that we did exclude, Blaine and I talked about this at length, we excluded those stop signs that intersected with state roadways because we felt that those signs would be replaced by the state of Indiana and not us. And then we also chose not to put stop signs that are on private roads with public access. So the road behind the high school that butts up to Lincoln, that belongs to the high school. So we kept those off the list, but this is basically, we know it's gonna change. As we grow, there's gonna be more additions to this, but at least this will get us caught up to this point. And so tonight is just an introduction, first read, and that's all it is.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And you said the ones where the state would replace, we know that for certain?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that, Andy, is there any question with you? Yeah.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Resolution 3-2022 To Opt Back Into the Opioid Litigation. Do you have anything to say this one?
This, there are some signature forms, if you choose to pass this resolution, that we will do at a later date, but probably the most important thing because of time deadlines is to indicate if you're going to adopt the resolution.
So are we able to pass this tonight?
Yes, if that is what you choose, yes.
If we choose to do that, yeah. Can we give any background on this? It's just a state litigation matter, right?
Excuse me, this resolution is on the agenda tonight to discuss whether or not, I mean, it says in the public document
Okay.
what the lawsuit is, and whether or not you would choose to opt in or stay out of the settlement agreement.
All right, thank you. That is not a voting member.
That's why I was like, where's that coming from?
Van Leeire is here. All right, so I, any questions or comments from the council? I'll entertain a motion. If we so choose to do it.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 3-2022.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by Chris and a second by Nancy. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
The police dog sees another dog. Okay. All right, so next on the list is a request for funds for CDL certification. Public Works Superintendent.
Good evening. On February 7th of 2022, the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration chose to implement a rule regarding CDLs. In that rule, anyone that has not previously held a CDL is required to take a class through an approved instruction organization that's approved through with the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. This was not foreseen in last year's budget, so moving forward, this will be placed in the annual budget, just in case we do have any individuals that choose to leave employment, and we are required to hire other individuals that may not have a CDL. Unfortunately, currently, the current employment world that we're living in, the town just can't afford to pay people that have CDLs currently. There's a business just east of town that they're starting out, CDL drivers at $26 an hour. Our top pay is just over $24 an hour, just under 25. So to get applicants through the door that have CDLs has been difficult. So what I'm requesting is the funding for the four positions that we currently have open in DPW from the host fund priority projects for this year, which partnering with a company in Plainfield, it's gonna be $17,000 to get those four employees through this class. Unfortunately, when the FMSCA, CSA implemented this rule, we were caught in the net of the blanket rule. I'm hoping in the future that we can be exempted, but reading through all the rules, currently the only exemption that we have is a snow emergency. Other than that, our employees are required to attend this class because we do require CDLs year-round. So that's one of the unfortunate things that occurred when the federal government decided to cast this net, and we were caught in it. I was in search of cheaper options, possibly sending the individuals to, doing online classes for the initial part, and then doing the behind-the-wheel locally. Unfortunately, the company in Plainfield that we've discussed this with, the only one that got back to us, it's all or nothing. So the other unfortunate part of this is we actually lose these employees for four weeks, so it's a bad rule that was implemented, and unfortunately, we're reaping the benefits of that.
How many weeks?
Four weeks. So we will pay them for the training while they're at training, and then we also will pay for the training, so. It's very unfortunate, and in addition to that, there's not a lot of negotiation because of all the costs associated with this. I've had to inform our two new guys that just started, that don't have CDLs, that they have to start down at the bottom of the pay scale. There's no negotiation there because of the amount of money that's gonna cost to get them trained to move forward. So that's where I'm requesting the $17,000 out of the host priority projects.
17 times 4?
No.
Oh, just 17.
No, $17,000 will cover
Okay.
the four open positions. I'm hoping that we can, we do have one individual that we just interviewed today that we're hoping we can get on, already has a CDL, but unfortunately, we don't have that in writing yet. So this will just cover that, and then if it's not spent, then that's even better for us, but just planning ahead for the four that we have open currently.
So, Mr. President? Two things, one, you'll notice this is a new form.
Yeah.
Well, what we found is we were using a form called a capital expenditure request for items that are not capital expenditures. There's, this is not a capital asset that we can report to the state of Indiana, so, superintendent pitcher? So, Superintendent Pitcher developed this form, Clerk Treasure's looked it over, she likes it. It, again, you're going to see these probably more often for things like services and things like that. But if there is a capital asset, you'll see the original form most likely until we look different. But I have talked with the Clerk Treasure in the host community or the, yeah, the priority projects. She believes this is a good account to take this out of. Right now, there's $197,000 in it and she believes that that would be a good use of the money that's in there.
Questions from you guys?
Unfortunately, there's no way around this. Nobody is exempt from this. It's hitting the electric utility industry very hard as well.
Really?
Well, you'd said something about exemptions. You hope to get exemptions in the future, what?
So, the fire department is actually exempted from CDLs. So, I was running that route to see if we could be exempted from CDLs for municipalities and the only time that that can be put into place is when we have a snow emergency. So, I can allow people that don't have CDLs to drive the CDL trucks for plowing, but other than that.
Makes a lot of sense. Worst-case scenario, go ahead and jump in the truck.
Yeah. Yeah.
Don't mind the ice.
Did I mention that this was a federal rule?
I'm fully aware.
That explains it all right there. Pardon the boring question, but this new form, does it pass all legal muster? It has all the right dots and?
It's just an internal form.
Okay.
We're actually not required to do, it's just something we internally request.
Okay.
So, this is, this is touchy, but this new guy that you might be able to hire who already has a CDL, would he be hired at a higher rate of pay than these other two guys who don't have their CDL?
Yes, just because of the CDL, to get an individual with a CDL through the door higher, at a higher rate and then there's no, very little training cost to get him out on the road. So, it's very convoluted on how it goes, but unfortunately, we can't take the funding out of salary ordinance that we're saving and pay this class because salaries can only be used for salaries. So, trying to make up the difference somehow, some way, and then once these individuals, the new employees earn their CDL, then they'll go up to a 90% pay rate just to try to retain for an extended period of time.
Okay.
And just for clarification, this is just a one-time class per person?
Yes.
So, they don't have to get certified every three years, like CPAs?
No, so, we are required medical certification, medical cards, one to two years, and then just license renewal. Once you get through the initial, the CDL is lifetime.
Looks like we need to consider a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for funds for the CDL certifications.
Second.
I have a motion by Chris, second by Nancy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Will and I would like to know if during the snow event, if we could drive the big trucks.
No. I don't think, we don't have enough insurance for that.
I drove a lot of fire trucks in my life. How different could it be?
Yeah. All righty. Andrew's got a lot of, at least a second request this evening, request for funds paving.
So, before either this time, I have the request to spend funds. These funds are the encumbered monies from 2021 associated with the Community Crossing Grant. Our portion of the 25% that we had last year was, I believe, $69,000. I don't have that number right in front of me. But due to the time constraints and trying to get this paid before the March 31st deadline of having the funds spent, we worked it out to where we're going to prepay the mobilization, de-mobilization and then the traffic control. And that's about that amount so that we can at least get the last year's dollars appropriated for this project. That way, we aren't dipping a whole lot into this year's funds so we can hopefully keep moving with the Community Crossing and get some more streets done this year. And that totals $67,202.
As Superintendent Pitcher said, this is money that he encumbered from last year.
Any questions?
I, I'm going to make a motion to approve the request to spend funds.
All right, I have a motion by Nancy, a second by Chris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Staff and council comments. Mr. Morgan, you have anything?
A couple of things. We met with Banning Engineering this week to further work on our redistricting and it's been very exciting. We think we've cleaned some of the lines up a little bit and I want to say we were within 20 people or less in each district. I mean, we're really just almost right on the nose for the number count. So, that's very good. Unfortunately, the gentleman we're working with, after he left here, had a death in the family. So, it may be about a month or so before we get it to you. We'll do it in a work study. We'll send it to you, approval, whatever you want to do. We can open up for public comment. Really, it's, it'll be a pretty transparent process.
And we vote that in.
That's correct, sir. That we, we'll have to rewrite the ordinance, which that's actually going to be the most taxing part of it because you have to detail every street and line that it goes around and I may be.
Who's the lucky person that gets to do that?
Actually, I may be coming back to you for some additional funds. Banning will do it for a price.
Can't we just attach a map? Can't we just attach a map?
We asked and apparently, apparently that's not legal, so. Town planners report, she's working on correcting addresses and zoning layers in the Towns Beacon website, preparing for the BZA meeting that was tonight, updating BZA forms and including the rules of procedure. Received a preliminary plat for the Penrose subdivision on 300 East and received applications for design review committee and BZA for the April meetings. The water department has been doing a lot of outside maintenance while the weather's been good, cleaning up dirt piles on Mackey Road from previous water leak, doing maintenance in meter routes, repair well two where a tree fell on the fence. And he and Superintendent Lofton are attending a conference in Frenchlick tonight. Parks Department, he's been working on the fountain and has it alive. I was so impressed when he sent me a picture of it. He's preparing for Patty on the Square, the 5K run tomorrow, working on Little League baseball fields, working the trail to move survey followed by gravel trail reroute. What the heck does that mean, Will?
We have to move the trail when the water plant goes in.
Thank you.
So, we're doing it prior to protect citizens so that hopefully they follow the new path and don't walk into the construction site.
He's been organizing the HR interviews. I think we had 130 applicants for the position, organizing the road impact fee committee and of course, as you know, he's been working on the fee structure. Superintendent Lofton, he's been working on floodplain stormwater conference, which he's gone to today. He's inspected Woodland Terrace, the underdrains and subbase on the fourth of the month, attending the water conference again. I don't know why he put that in there twice. Starting stormwater repair on Urban and meeting with Superintendent Kirkpatrick on the Auger property to discuss sanitary sewer options. Wastewater, doing lift station checks, County Home Lift Station, they're pulling the pump three to change it out. Claire Creek number one, they're replacing pump number two with a new pump. Clarifier oil changes, they ran the belt press for three days. Initial startup of UV system by Trojan Service Tech. They've been running the camera to investigate a sinkhole. They have a person on vacation three days and they've been working on the MRO, which I did ask before. And that's his monthly report of operations, so. DPW, they've been patching potholes, installing the crosswalks around the schools. The temperatures are predicted to remain above freezing, so they may begin using the street sweeper again. Andy will be conducting interviews to fill a position that was vacated by a transfer to the water department. After the crosswalks are installed, it'd be training school personnel in the operations of the crosswalk. And last but certainly not least, Madison has been finalizing website updates, working on Facebook posts. She has been working with the Parks Department and in the Downtown Partnership on the Patties on the Square shenanigans and she is organizing her new office. Mr. President, that's all I have.
Sure. Will, just come out tomorrow, 8 o'clock. We're dying the fountain. Be great to have a big crowd. David's going to say a few words and then he's going to turn the fountain green, so hopefully we'll see you tomorrow.
I think it's wrong. Just brought it to life and then he's going to die it. I don't get that.
Did you say I'm turning it green? Yes, you're holding the. I have to go to work after that, so hopefully I don't get any spill on myself. Slow pour. Yeah, slow pour. I've got the green shirt that I'll probably just wear one time a year. Yeah.
Well, I'm on an advisory board for the Hendricks County Communications Center and, you know, that's the center where all the 911 calls go to and they're dispatched. But they, and I couldn't make it tonight anyway because of the meetings here, but they had to cancel that because of a huge warehouse fire in Plainfield, which is a big deal.
Chris?
That's all.
That probably is the shortest DPW update you've given since Andrew's been with us.
I was thinking the same thing, sir.
And then just, have we communicated what's going on at the park as far as the water plant? Is it, I get questions all the time.
So, we have put it out several times. We also went to the Planning Commission and made sure that the Planning Commission knew. The, we have plans to put out, well, we have put out the drawing of the location, but we don't have the actual renderings yet. They're supposed to be here sometime this week or next week. And once we have those, we'll do another media blast. But we have been doing plugging over time, but we don't have all the content yet. So, when we get the rest of the content, we will put it out. We have a one-year ago drawing of the layout because some of the things have changed now.
But we did, we've done this and we've had public hearings. We even had a public meeting on the master plans, is that right, Tony? We had those probably three years ago. We made presentations to, I know Rotary and to the Chamber of Commerce. And I think our storyboards are still online if I'm not mistaken, so I don't know what else we can do.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
And then, speaking of parks, Gary Aiken Park, timeline on movement on what's going to go on up there?
So, we're getting really close to moving dirt. We, we looked at a whole new layout. We may have to tear up the ground that's there just inside the circle to regrade it to. Right now, it all grades to one side and we want to regrade it and crown it in the middle. We won't have to bring in any dirt, but we're going Friday, me and a member from DJFL, and we're going to confirm because I was like, hey, I've been at Plainfield's, they're laid out exactly how I want them. I'm just confirming with them because they're the ones that have to play on it. So, once we get that confirmation, then we just pick one of the three companies, so. It's coming.
One last thing, sorry. I just want to thank Rob and his crew for the help that they gave. I understand they're still working in Plainfield, so hopefully they all stay safe.
Crazy. I work not too far from that. I just have a couple of things. I was making some notes. You know, I hear, I just think there's a lot of positivity in Danville right now with a lot of the things that we've got coming up. I mean, the turning of the weather always helps. It's nice out there. But all the work that Madison's doing, for example, to bring Danville a little more alive and so, great job on that. And what we're doing tomorrow with St. Patty's and, you know, the Downtown Danville Partnership, what they've got planned for Danville. There's just a lot of good things about Danville. There's a lot of negativity out there, but we're always going to hear that. But we just have to keep pushing forward and doing what we think's best for Danville now and Danville later. And I just want to say kudos to everybody who's working their butts off to make all this happen. I'm excited to see what happens this summer. Just a quick personal story, some good friends of mine, I've known this guy since I was in junior high school, moved to Danville and they are so excited just about the opportunity to walk downtown because where they came from, there wasn't anything like that. And they bought that big house right there by the train. It used to have the green siding on it. They bought that house. So, they, maybe I shouldn't have said that publicly because now they'll be mad at me. But, but no, it's just to hear them talk about how excited they are about being here and the things they've seen do and happen. So, I just, I love it. I think it's great. Everybody's doing a great job and I'm excited for the next few years, so.
All right, I think we have some claim dockets to consider.
I move we pass the claim dockets?
Second.
Motion by Nancy, second by Chris. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, we are adjourned.